Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, November 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Omaha Brian JRRTC color guards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President America will lead us in the OPS mission and vision statement.
All right, first is our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Scanlon.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Ada.
Motion carries. Moving on to school spotlight with Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We are pleased to present Alice Buffett Magnet School's sixth grader this evening, Ms. Macy Peacher. She is our OPS proud spotlight. Macy was nominated Youth Female Athlete of the Year by 2018 National Congress of State Games. Macy was nominated for this award after winning the Cornhusker State Games as Female Youth Athlete of the Year. She received her national award during a symposium in Kentucky during October. At just 11 years old, Macy is a standout wrestling champ. In 2018, she enrolled in 10 of 11 events offered in wrestling. Five were girls divisions and five were boys divisions. Macy wrestled 21 matches in two days defeating 20 opponents. She competes across the country and trains year-round. Outside of wrestling, she is a straight A student and she participated in student council this past year. We salute Ms. Macy Peacher and her family who are here with us this evening on her accomplishments. And I would like to, at this time, welcome the principal of Alice Buffett Magnet Middle School, Anthony Clark Casmeric. He will give some brief remarks.
Thank you. Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Dr. Logan, I want to thank you for putting Macy in the spotlight tonight. I want you to know that Macy was very excited to get this award and to be in the spotlight tonight, but she made me make one promise, and that was that she didn't have to give a speech. She has agreed to answer some questions, however, and I just wanted to kind of say a couple of quick things. I wanted to read a few things that have been written about Macy, just so you get a sense, not just who she is as an athlete, but also who she is as a student. First of all, she had a wrestling director nominate her for this national award. And just to be clear, this is truly a national award through the State Games Association. And she's not only the Nebraska recipient, but she's the national recipient. Traveled to Kentucky to receive that award. The wrestling director who nominated her said, "Very few high school wrestlers in this state have been training for wrestling like Macy has. Most 10-year-olds might attend one camp and practice very little over the summer. I see she has strong athletic skills, is smart on the mat, and has a great love for the sport. I'm excited to see what the future will bring for Macy and what her talent and desire will improve upon." She says many of the tournaments, this coach says, "Many of her tournaments are against boys who have trained for more years than her and appear to have more strength, but Macy doesn't let that get her down. Instead, she uses it as fuel to train harder and realizes that competition and losses are a way to learn and improve." So I asked her teachers on her team at Buffett Magnet Middle School to give me a couple of things to say, and here are what a couple of teachers have said. Macy's not only a strong athlete, but she takes her studies seriously, she's responsible, conscientious, and her smile is infectious. There it is. Macy's hardworking, persistent, and most of all, kind. We're proud to call her one of our own. She's a caring person and often steps in to help others without being asked. Her drive and passion shows each and every day, and I'm sure at home with her brother Braxton, it's as competitive as well. There's her brother back over there, who's also a wrestler. Just a couple of quick things I want to say, and then I'll let you ask her questions. Braxton and Macy, by the way, when they're done with this, are headed to wrestling practice. She's late, it's a 6:30 practice, but her coach said it was okay to come for this. So she's practicing all the time. And one of the things that I love about Macy is she's a very funny girl, and one of my favorite things she wears is a headband that says what, Macy? Says "Suck it up, buttercup." That's what it says. So Macy is truly a great example of what it means to be a student, what it means to be a young athlete, and what it means to be a strong young woman. And I want you to just welcome Macy, and if you have any questions, she'll answer those. Come on up, girl. Show them your awards. We'll show them your awards.
Do you have questions?
Yes, real quick, could you explain, I kind of prepped you a little bit before getting on the mic, could you explain all the different techniques that you had to wrestle in your tournaments?
All the styles.
The styles.
I don't want to talk.
You start.
There we go. Teamwork.
So scholastic.
Takedown, beach, advantage.
Advantage.
Top and bottom.
And, or that's scholastic. Freestyle.
Freestyle. Awesome. Thank you so much. I'll open it up for other board members as well. Dr. Holman.
What an incredible honor, Macy. That's just wonderful. Congratulations to you. Can you tell us how you became interested in wrestling and about what age your interest began?
I was seven and my brother was seven. And I started wrestling because when I was at my brother's wrestling tournaments, I was bored.
Wrestling tournaments take all day long, and it was boring, and so she wanted to participate. And we said no, and then she broke her arm at home, just screwing around. Bought us a year, another year, and the club that her brother wrestled at wouldn't allow girls to wrestle. And so we switched clubs, and nobody would pair up with her because girls had never wrestled at the new club. And so her brother paired up with her to, in her speech that she used in Kentucky, she said, "So, to show people that I don't have cooties." And then we haven't been able to stop either of them since then. Thank you.
Mrs. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. Well, Macy, wow, girl power to you. I'm impressed. I know that we're not supposed to normally ask ladies their weight, but can you tell us, is this, what your weight class is? What do you normally wrestle?
The last tournament I just wrestled at, I was 74, but I'm usually, my weight is usually 73.
Okay, awesome. Do you have any female wrestlers that you look up to or that are your role models?
One of my friends, Leila.
There's 29 girls registered at her club now.
That was my next question, are there any other girls? She just answered that, okay.
And Leila is a freshman this year, so she, her friend Leila, so last weekend was the last tournament she can do as a club because when high school season starts, you're forbidden to do anything outside of high school, otherwise you're ineligible.
Okay.
The boys have the same rule.
Sure.
Until after high school, so the girls can elect to not wrestle in high school. Unfortunately, Nebraska has not got on board with a lot of the other states, and we're not sanctioned for high school wrestling yet. Maybe by the time she's there, but she's prepared to wrestle boys because that's all she, that's not all she wrestles. She wrestles both. We wrestled in Colorado this weekend, all girls, but we're prepared either way, but we'll support it either way that it goes because she's not going to let down.
Well, I think everybody in here is excited to see where you go. I feel like I should get your autograph for later. Maybe, maybe later I'll go over and I'll sneak over and get it from you. Anyway, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gotti.
Well, again, congratulations to you. It's just really a delight to have you here this evening. So we were talking ahead of time, can you tell us what your favorite style of wrestling is?
Beach.
Beach?
Yeah.
Okay, so can you tell us a little bit about why that's your favorite?
I don't really usually do it unless I'm at the state games, and it's just fun because you can like just mess around in the sand and throw people.
All right, pretty cool. That's pretty cool. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Thanks.
That's awesome. And again, thank you so much for representing not just students in OPS, but students across the entire state of Nebraska and being a role model for women across the country. If you wouldn't mind, we would love to shake your hand and congratulate you and take a photo with you and your family up here. And I know you've directed me not to let your brother in the photo, so you don't get to join us. We'd love to shake your hand, and everybody, please give her a round of applause again.
Everybody look this way, big smiles. One, two, three. One, two, three. Mom, do you have a soft one? You want me to take one last? Yes. Ready? One, two, three.
You know me. I had to drop a class, I had to do that. That's a struggle. A lot of water.
Yes, oh yeah. Those are a lot of damage.
Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Superintendent Dr. Logan.
Good evening, everybody. President Snow and Board of Education, good evening. The, I have several remarks this evening, so let me put my glasses on so I can see them. The Burke High School Bulldogs, we'll begin with them, brought home a big W this past Friday, woo-hoo! Night in their defeat against Lincoln Southeast in the Class A semifinals, winning 35 to 13, hoping to bring home the championship. We look forward to seeing the trophy and those championship rings at the home of the Bulldogs later this month. They have a game against Millard West on Friday. On Thursday evening, future high schoolers, parents, principals, and current high school student ambassadors packed this boardroom, and it was really packed. Eighth graders checked out their high school options in early preparation for starting their high school journeys next fall. All seven of our high schools showcased their magnet and specialty programs. It was a great event, and also the Career Center was here as well. Friday morning, I was able to visit McMillan students at the Master Craft Building at 15th and Cumming Streets. If you have not been, had an opportunity to go there, many small and emerging businesses are in that space. It is a very cool and hip kind of space. Students involved with Project Lead the Way worked with their mentors from Alley Pointer, Machiato Architecture, and some great time, it was a great time interacting with students and watching them work on their projects. The Omaha Public Schools Foundation earned national recognition with the Investor in America Award by Partners for Livable Communities, a Washington-based nonprofit. The award honors individuals and organizations who shape a more livable, sustainable, and equitable America. The Omaha Public Schools Foundation is an exceptional partner to this district, and outstanding team of unsung heroes who provide tremendous support for special projects and programs. We commend Executive Director Toba Cohen-Dunning and her team for their dedication to our students and families. Last Thursday, Mr. Scott Wilson, teacher at Central High School, received the Exemplary Teaching Award from the Nebraska State Education Association this past weekend in Lincoln. He received that from the State Commissioner, Dr. Boomstead, and it was an honor to have him represent OPS and to see him congratulate his parents, one of whom is an educator, at that event. It was really, his speech was noteworthy, and it's actually the runner-up to the Nebraska State Teacher of the Year. There are two finalists, and they invite both of them to receive recognition, but also a large amount of gifts. They left there with both of their hands full of gifts from many different organizations and businesses around the state. Bryan High School teacher Tyler Schindler received the Nebraska Farm Bureau Foundation Scholarship Award of $14,000 for the second consecutive year. Schindler is one of 13 teachers recognized throughout Nebraska. Recipients of the award are all agricultural education teachers in their first through fifth year of teaching, and we congratulate Mr. Schindler. The Northwest High School Magnet School student athlete Emmanuel Omkamka earned the Runza Student of the Week Award. He earned a $500 college scholarship. That's really terrific, although I've never had a Runza. I do have a gift card for one. Maybe one day I'll have one. I've never had a Runza, I'm sorry. Burke High School teacher Nicole Nieber earned the K-12 Tech Educator of the Year for Ames 2018 Tech Celebration Awards. This award is presented to one instructor or administrator who rose to the top of their profession as a technology leader. Nieber will receive her award November 15 at the Founder's 109. Northwest High School Magnet student Abigail Rafe, she is one of 210 students nationwide to attend the 25th Annual Global Youth Institute in Des Moines, Iowa. She actually attended that last week. We're very proud of her. She interacted with leaders from around the country, from around the world, not just the country, from Brazil, Canada, China, the Dominican Republic, Ghana, Honduras, Kosovo, Mexico, the Netherlands, and the Philippines. So congratulations to Abigail, that is remarkable. The North High Magnet Debate Team earned national recognition with the overall team's sweepstakes in the Maryville Classic Speech and Debate Tournament in Maryville, Missouri on October 27 and 28. We are certainly OPS proud of them. The National Education Association will hold its annual celebration of American Education Week, November 12 through November 16. Great public schools are a basic right in this country. This week-long celebration honors our commitment as educators and spotlights the great work happening in publication around the country and right here in Nebraska. Find more information on the NEA website and keep an eye out on our OPS social media site next week for posts that highlight this celebration. Lastly, I'd like to make sure that the public knows that for the two upcoming high schools, we do have community meetings scheduled on December 4 from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Davis Middle School. There will be a community meeting regarding the new high school that will be located at 156th and Idaho Street. So we look forward to impacted families and communities and whoever is interested throughout the district, folks who have potential high schoolers, those will be students who are currently in fifth or sixth grade or younger, to attend that if they're interested. Also, on December 6, the 60th and L Community Meeting will happen, same time, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The location for that meeting is Ashland Park Robbins, and so that's a change from earlier today. So the location for that meeting, and we will have those posted on our website probably tomorrow for those who need to, who are interested in attending those meetings. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you, President Snow.
Thank you. Moving on to Board members, communication. Mrs. Cassidy.
Well, first off, Dr. Logan, I volunteer to take you to Runza. But in all seriousness, this weekend on Saturday, while some of you were probably home warm, hanging out at your homes, I was at a cold event, but it was so heartwarming. It was a really nice event that I have to spotlight. It was called, it is called, I should say, Girls on the Run of Nebraska. And I'm not really familiar with this organization, I'm not sure if it's in every state, but we do have it here in Nebraska. And I participated with my fourth grader. This is a program that is, it's, I'm not really sure how many schools, I think any school can sign up to be in it, but we had several Omaha Public Schools that participated. My child's school, Gomez Heritage, was there. And what it is, is it's a 10-week program that starts back in late August, and the girls run twice a week, twice a week. They practice for the big race, which was Saturday. It's a 5K. So this is third graders through fifth graders that ran 3.1 miles with their run buddy, which I was a run buddy. It was amazing. You should have seen some of these kids. Just fantastic job. My own child, I was just absolutely proud of her that she ran 3.1 miles. There's adults that can't run 3.1 miles. So I happily will say, though, that I did finish. It was very cold, so these kids, it was amazing to see them out there. It started raining a little bit. The race was in Lincoln. But I did see some of our own Omaha Public Schools there, besides Gomez Heritage, I saw Saddle Brook, Standing Bear, Harrison, and is it Pacote? Am I saying that correct? Pacot, Pacot. I did see some of those schools there, and I probably have missed a few, but just a great, great organization and something that I'd encourage other Omaha Public Schools to look up and get on board. And like I said, I don't know a lot about the organization, but it was, it was fantastic.
Mrs. Gotti.
Well, I'll just add to that, if you're a runner and you're watching, be a volunteer for Girls on the Run if you're a female. They're always looking for volunteers, and I know my neighbor participates in that and is a volunteer at one of the schools. So first of all, I want to give a shout out to Omaha South JROTC program. They were at the Omaha Children's Hospital Gala this weekend on Saturday night, selling raffle tickets, helping with the silent auction, holding the door open for folks. 1,500 people were in attendance, so lots of people got to see our wonderful students helping out and their leadership. So I just, I told them that I would give them a shout out tonight because they did such an awesome job, and I'm so grateful that they could participate in that event. And then the second thing I would like to do is I want to thank one of the churches in our community, Westside Church, has adopted Prairie Wind School, and there was a fire on October 31 at an apartment building, and a number of our families were completely displaced and lost everything they had. And so they have been collecting money, and I think the foundation may also be, so if you're so interested in helping those families, I would encourage that as well. They had a number of families that lost everything they had in that fire, so just sharing that with the community.
Thank you guys so much. Vice President America.
Just because it's the night before, as everyone knows, tomorrow is Election Day. I just want to encourage everyone who's here and everyone watching, take your kids with you if you go in person to vote tomorrow. Talk to them about the importance of voting and the importance of being involved and an active citizen in our community. And it's, it's something that if we instill that value in our children early, they grow and learn that as they're getting older, and when they do turn 18 and they're able to vote on their own, they have a better understanding of why it's important to be active and to vote and participate in our community.
That is correct. Tomorrow is Election Day, so please go out and vote. That's all I can say on that. Moving on to public comment, it's the next item on our agenda. We have one speaker who submitted a request to speak form. The Board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you please respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking at those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each board member gets a copy, and as a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before beginning public comment. It is now 6:58, and our only speaker is, apologies. My apologies.
Thank you guys so much. Vice President, America.
Just because it's the night before, as everyone knows, tomorrow is Election Day. I just want to encourage everyone who's here and everyone watching, take your kids with you if you go in person to vote tomorrow. Talk to them about the importance of voting and the importance of being involved and an active citizen in our community. And it's something that if we instill that value in our children early, they grow and learn that as they're getting older. And when they do turn 18 and they're able to vote on their own, they have a better understanding of why it's important to be active and to vote and participate in our community.
That is correct. Tomorrow is Election Day, so please go out and vote. That's all I can say on that. Moving on to public comment. It's the next item on our agenda. We have one speaker who submitted a request to speak form. The Board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you please respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking at those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each Board Member gets a copy, and as a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before beginning public comment. It is now 6:58, and our only speaker is... Apologies. My apologies. Yes, ma'am. public comment.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Teresa Amazick. I live at 3911 North 21st Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you for allowing me five minutes of your time. On Friday, October 5, 2018, my grandson, who attends Integrated Learning Center, came home. When he came home and told me that the security guard caused his bruising, I immediately took photos and began a process of an investigation. Sadly, the staff at OPS has denied their involvement in this incident, and the police department has closed their investigation due to not having enough evidence to file charges against the security guard. Excuse me. Prophet said the teacher, his teacher, Ms. Bird, told him to go sit in the hallway because of his behavior. Soon after, Ms. Bird checked on him, checked on Prophet, and Prophet was lying on the floor. Ms. Bird called, sorry, Ms. Bird called security to intervene. The security said to Prophet, "I'm going to count to five, and you better get up." The security quickly counted from one to five, proceeded to grab my grandson by his ankle and his neck, swinging him from side to side, possibly hitting his face on the wall, causing bruises to, or dragging him across the floor, which caused bruising to both eyes. It is my goal to raise awareness to the fact that Integrated Learning Center, which is a behavior school, does not have any cameras in the hallways. If cameras were present, sorry, it would have captured all the activities, holding staff and students accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. That is before us.
Second.
We have a joint motion by Mr. Pullman and Mrs. Gadding, second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? Hearing on roll call, please. Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pullman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Ada. Motion carries. Moving on to our first item on the agenda, it is J2A. This is Dr. Logan's report on our first 90 days. And also, for everyone else that's in the audience, we do have copies of her report at the check-in desk, wherever you come in, so if you want to grab that real quick, we'll wait half a minute.
Good evening again, everyone. I want to first thank many people who helped with my first 90 days. First off, the Board of Education, who did many things to help me and support a smooth transition as I began my superintendency here in the district. I also want to thank staff who contributed to this report. Dr. Scott Schmidt-Bonney, who I always forget to pronounce the E on the end of his name, so I apologize, doctor, but I really want to thank him for gathering data for me so that I could prepare this report. Our Chief of Staff, Matt Ray, and the many people that contributed in terms of critiquing and giving me feedback on this report. This report is hopefully comprehensive but not exhaustive. It talks about many of the things that I was able to do during the first 90 days, and it really, for the most part, just covers the 90 days. It does not cover the pre-entry, although there's a few things on here that cover the pre-entry. Almost everything on here was done post-July 1. The plans are in the back, and there's a few things I'm going to tweak before we actually publish them on the web, especially in terms of acronyms. And I do apologize because there are a lot of acronyms in there for the general public, and I will make sure that we take those acronyms off and not assume that everyone knows that all of those acronyms are. The organization of the 90-day report is, basically goes over the input, how the community was engaged, some transition results from a survey, some of the lessons that were learned, a bit of student achievement data that I consider live data that informs principal practice and the practice of our teachers every day, the progress on the actual 90-day plan moving forward, and a closing statement. The input process over the first 90 days included meeting with a lot of different stakeholders. The stakeholders are listed, I believe it's on page four of the plan. You can see all of the stakeholders. And again, where it says that's a sample list, and it might be page five, but there were many other people that I met with besides the people that are listed here. Every person that I met with spoke positively about the district, and they also spoke candidly about things that they felt were areas of opportunity for me as the incoming superintendent. I cannot thank them enough for their candor and for their real-time critical feedback of things that provide an opportunity for not just us, but more importantly, for our There you see a list of all of the different organizations that I had an opportunity to meet with during those first 90 days. And it even says sample. It's not really a sample. It's really, it is a sample because it doesn't include everyone. The first item that I'm going to talk about this evening was a survey that was disseminated via email. We did have more than 10,000 respondents with unique IP addresses, and they were able to identify their groups, the groups that they represented. And as you can see, the lion's share of respondents are OPS staff members, followed by parents and guardians of current students. We wanted to delineate between folks who were community members and folks who had current students. There's an important difference there. And then also former students, and then obviously our current students. One thing I need to point out about surveys is that often in surveys, in terms of what psychometricians say about surveys, is that typically, many of the people who respond to surveys respond with a critical eye. So while there are many people who responded positively, psychology tells us that people are more moved to respond to a survey if they have something that they feel is negative to share. And we all know that from our own experiences with engaging in surveys that we receive. Probably, I know I receive one every day about something. The focus of the survey was on maintenance of schools, meeting the educational needs of students, transparency, and equitable and efficient use of funds. The topics that were selected for the focus of the survey were selected as a result of, one, the bond issue, because the bond had passed, and we wanted to kind of get some ideas about how people were feeling about the maintenance of schools, since many deferred maintenance items are on the, were on bond, phase one and phase two of the bond. The educational needs of students came to mind as I spoke to many parents who were all along a continuum of satisfaction with the education that their children were receiving. And then transparency came up over and over and over again during my transition, and many of the folks that I was able to speak with in person talked about that being a big area of opportunity to talk about the things, not just the things that are going well, but the things that are in need of improvement. And then lastly, we all know that we went through a significant budget cut last year, and that we have OSER's unfunded liability, which is impacting the budget. It was that side by side with whether or not folks thought we are, as an entity, as a board and superintendent and her staff, using funds appropriately. Now, obviously, that's for me going forward, but those were some of the concerns from past practice. So as you can see in the upkeep of schools on your survey, that, and this was an area that actually, I think, surprised me in terms of, because I have found the schools here having an opportunity. Can you hear me fine?
It's down.
It seems to be dropping off. Okay. Is that better? This is dropping off a bit. I apologize. The upkeep of schools, this was an area that surprised me, having an opportunity to see the facilities in the district, that the response was as negative as it was. I attribute this to, again, respondents that will probably responded or in buildings that have not yet been addressed by bond issues. I know that in schools that have been addressed or have had major renovations, or in some cases even new, brand-new buildings, that the sentiment about those schools is extremely positive. But this is an area for us to, for us to use as a growth mechanism for our maintenance and facility staff, and also as we go through the bond program to see if this improves. In terms of meeting the needs of all students, this is also an area where we have some opportunity. Forty-three percent positive. Some of the things that were concerning were large class sizes, which occur in some schools, but not all, behavior that resulted in a loss of instruction is something else that came up repeatedly in this survey. And then this last one, and I had a wonderful conversation with our chief academic officer about the opportunity to have tiered interventions for our students. This is an area, and as we, area of growth, and as we plan forward in our budget for next year, we know that including monies for new curriculum, especially in our K-5 of reading, and to have interventions for students who need additional support is an area where we're going to, where we definitely need to make sure that we allocate funds so that our students have the materials that they need. In terms of openness and transparency, again, we had some areas of where we certainly can improve. It was interesting that, it's interesting how people interpret this question. People who interpreted this question and had a positive response really focused on that the district has used texts and emails and phone calls and newsletters to inform staff. I think that some of the people that didn't view it as positively were really thinking about many decisions that they felt were made in secret and that information was hoarded in silos, by, that meaning different departments are taking the, or have the information but are not sharing the information with stakeholders. And hopefully, one of the goals of this report is to begin that process in a very open way with me as superintendent and making sure that we are transparent and open, not just about the celebrations that we have, but also about the things that confront us and we have an opportunity to impact positively. And efficient and equitable use of funds, there were a few things that happened. The positives were about the bond and folks feeling like this had improved because of the, in light of the recent bond initiatives. Some of the things that were not as positive were things that schools that have and schools that people perceive as not having. So there was an equity issue that some felt. This was really stark, I think, amongst the teachers, if I remember correctly, in terms of how they were feeling about it, as well as technology, and that there are some schools that have out-of-date devices. And I know that there has been a refresh that is planned and that as a part of the budget cuts, some of that money was cut. So as we think about how we're spending money moving forward, making sure that all of our schools have the technology that they need, it's not an extra. I often regard it as, it's similar to giving a student a pencil or a book, and that they can't, we can't prepare students for the 21st century without giving them 21st century tools. And we know that all of us are usually using some sort of device that we need to produce In terms of overall satisfaction with OPS, it came out on the positive side, in that 52% really felt it was positive, and then you have some mixed as well, and then some folks as being, some folks are neutral. I think that we have an opportunity here to look at our satisfaction at the end of this year in a new light in terms of implementing some of the things that we know need to be implemented as a result of this survey. Communication from schools to families was highlighted by numerous parents as an influential, pardon me, element of their satisfaction. Folks really wanted to have information. They want to have information timely. And then there was a general lack of communication between some departments here, the Teacher Administrative Center and schools, and those are some things that we already have started to work on. And we've been receiving some positive feedback, but again, we know that there is always more that we can do. I'm going to stop now to see if there are any questions from the Board regarding the survey, so that I don't get all the way to the end. And feel free to take a couple of moments and see if there are questions.
Mr. Pullman.
I might have missed it, but what was the date range of when these were received, when the responses?
I believe it, I know that it ended about September the 13th or so, and I want to say it started a little bit before Labor Day. I think that that's the date range. It was about, I think it was, actually, it was out almost 21 days, so it must have been about a week before Labor Day that this came out. So from there through about September the 13th.
Mrs. Gadding.
I want to thank you for your comments on the efficient and equitable use of funds. I think that's probably from the surveys. The one thing I heard most from parents and teachers was the lack of technology in the buildings in my sub-district and feeling very frustrated that they didn't have connectivity during map testing or other things. So I really appreciate your effort to take a look at that and provide enough resources to be able to properly test kids and work through things.
I believe that the refresh, we have to probably stick with our refresh plan. Sometimes, often, again, there is sometimes a feeling amongst some that these are extra items, and we know that these are essential items, and to the degree that we talk with our families and our staff, and as we go through any potential new cuts, that this is not something that we can put off because it puts us behind in other ways. And that, as we're thinking about how we approach the budget moving forward, that we have enough time so that we can be strategic and... have enough time so that we can be strategic and make, not just make cuts to a, to a broad area or line item cut that we're not thinking about what that impact will be down the road for individual students.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you.
So, as we move forward, these are some of the overarching lessons that I believe that I was able to learn from the survey that was given to, and our large number of respondents, which is a remarkable number of respondents. And we kind of laughed because we did have to have unique IP addresses and unless somebody was going around and to several computers, I don't think that these are, is likely these are pretty accurate in terms of what, how people are feeling and how our constituents are feeling about where we are right now and our opportunities for growth. I will also say there were 980 pages of comments. So, people did leave a lot of comments and what we did was, some of the comments mentioned names and those kinds of things, which was not really the focus of the, we were really looking for trends. And again, thanks to Scott Schmidt-Bonnie for being able to condense it down into some trends that we can look at and help us move forward. Okay? So, move forward to student achievement. I, I want to start the student achievement by saying that I believe it's a December staff, this is December, the first board meeting in December, there will be a long presentation, a longer, much longer, not real long, but a longer presentation on the map testing, which is a measure of academic progress that students take. And they take it three times a year and it's an opportunity for us to see how they're growing within a certain, within the year. What we, educators love about map testing is it's live testing, it's formative, so teachers can see areas where students are not doing as well. And they receive that data during the year so that they have an opportunity to do about it. It's not like the Nebraska state testing where they get that far after the year is over. So, in our first slide, we see some areas for growth where if you look all the way over on the left column, we can see negative growth. That means that students went backwards during a year. And there, sometimes there are things that can account for that. Student attendance can account for that. Teacher attendance can account for that, or a teacher vacancy can sometimes account for that. But those are the numbers that make, keep us up at night when we see students not growing. And the last thing that can account for that is how serious students take the, the testing conditions at the end of the year when students are taking the test. But that's our huge area for growth. If you look at those numbers there and the reading, for reading. And then also on the far right corner, prior to the total, where you see the students who exceeded the growth goal, that's also exciting for us. We really want to move everybody over to the right if we can and not have any students that are showing that they did not grow. And then, one of the things that we'll show next month, hopefully, for all of you, is that, to see if, in the kindergarten, if you look at students who had negative growth, what was their attendance like? And think that that will also be very helpful. And one of the other things that I'm hoping to look at sometime in the future and will certainly share with the board is, do we have students who are negatively growing year after year? So, if you have a student who had the test last year as a second grader, how are they doing, how did they do the following year as a third grader? Because those would be the students we'd want to intervene with the soonest. And then also, the, and math, very similar chart. Math actually looks better in terms of negative growth and that we have smaller numbers of students that have not shown, are growing in the wrong direction, but we still have work to do. Until we get that number to zero, we won't be satisfied. Are there any questions about this portion before we move on? Please, take your time. Okay, let's move on. So, and for the 90-day progress on the action steps, in the plan that was done for the board, there were four goals. Establish a strong working relationship with the Board of Education. This is the actual 90-day plan. Establish trust and confidence with open and honest communication without, throughout the community. Review and study the current instructional practices and initiatives. And then lastly, to review the study, and study district-wide fiscal and overall organizational In the back of the room as well, there were documents that looked like this, where I kind of go over some of the action items from that. And I'm just going to speak very briefly about each goal, and I mean very briefly, because this is a very detailed document, if folks are interested in reading. And again, this is in the entire, in the, the large document as well. I've been really excited about working with the Board of Education as a new superintendent. This is obviously my first time working with the board. I do want to thank you publicly for making that transition to working with the board relatively smooth. And it's been, I'm learning a lot from each of you, especially about your constituents. I really appreciate when you bring things to my attention. It is very helpful, you're never bothering me, when you bring those things to my attention. Also, I'd like to thank our president and our vice president for the consistent meetings that we have prior to the board meetings. They are extremely helpful in helping us iron out any details with the agenda. We, nobody likes surprises and it is, it has been very helpful. And then to have the meetings the, the day after, where we have, and obviously typically we try to do those by, via phone. We do the pre, in-person, and the post typically by phone. Those have been very helpful as well in terms of things that have gone well and helped me grow as a leader in terms of working with the board. And I'm, I'm not just saying that, they actually really are helpful. And then the two workshops that we've had, one of the next steps that we have is that after tomorrow, we'll have two new board members. And so, having them join the board and for it to be, you know, the, the relationship, building that relationship and then to have a strong, not just working relationship with the superintendent, but in terms of serving the public and the public good on behalf of our 53,000 children. So, I think that that's our next step. I know we have a retreat scheduled sometime moving forward and I'm looking forward to that. I know we had a couple of board members who were concerned about the day of the week. I'm, I'm good with whatever day of the week we choose, but looking forward to that as well. And goal two, under establishing trust and open and honest communication, I, I don't think I could have listened more. I have met with everyone in Omaha. I think that there may be a few people I haven't met with, and, but they're trying to meet with me, so I'm looking forward to, to meeting with more. I meet with some employee groups regularly and to include our Omaha Educators Association, our Service Employees International Union that represents our maintenance, our PARAs, and many facilities folks and many, many others. And I also meet regularly with OSAA, our Omaha School Administrators Association. They, their feedback to me is just, is super, super invaluable, very much appreciate their candor. In addition to that, I also have level meetings with our high school principals and I've had to have those each month. And then also am meeting quarterly with our middle school principals, just me and then them. And moving forward, starting in December, I will be meeting with groups of elementary principals. There are more than 60, so I have to meet with them in small groups, so I'm looking forward to that. And as the document details, there are many people that I've met with, philanthropy community and a special education advisory, so on, District Citizens Advisory Council, I believe that got that right, as well as some of the other large organization, the Metropolitan Omaha Education Consortium, as well as many others. In terms of, whoops, goal three, reviewing the current instructional practices and initiatives, I do meet regularly with the executive directors of school support. We have a regularly scheduled meeting. We'll have our next one in December. And we meet, we meet quarterly, just myself and Ms. Colmine and the executive directors of school support. I also meet with the chiefs of each of the divisions to include a weekly, a very detailed weekly update from our human resources director. I need to thank him publicly because it keeps a really good pulse beat on how things are going in the district with our staff, and I do very much appreciate that. The morale of staff is something that's very important to me. In terms of the executive directors of school support, also meeting with them, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, all others, executive director for school and community services. And I would like to highlight that we did hire our safety director. He started, it was his first day. His name is Mr. Donnie Morrison. We're thrilled to have him onboard and he's beginning his training. And actually, we'll be doing some shadowing of the safety director in Lincoln, Nebraska, who is a very highly regarded safety director and very excited about that. Lastly, I've visited all district schools and continue to observe instructional practice and have reviewed student data. So, I'll take any questions about goals two and three, and then we'll move to the final It's okay not to have any questions. Okay? We'll move on to reviewing, study fiscal and organizational health. Seated at the table this evening is Ms. Courtney, Mrs. Courtney Byrd, who is our interim chief financial officer. And she has already started the process of, and we have a very detailed calendar for building the budget moving forward. And all of the different processes that need to go into that have been initiated with our staff. And I want to thank each of the chiefs of, chiefs of our divisions who will thoroughly review their budgets to see where there are areas where we can save and if we have any redundancies. And all of that will feed into beginning these budget meetings. That needs to be done first and then we will move into having, looking at the budget process so that we have a straw man to present to our Board of Education as they start considering what needs to happen and we are, really understand our fiscal position. I will say, it's public now, that we did get our bond rating, it's now public, we did, our bond rating maintained at AA II, which we're very excited, which is our, which is our previous bond rating. There was a press release that went out this afternoon from Moody's and we're very, that should get some applause in the room, but that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Snow. That's big news because it saves us a lot of money. If our bond rating goes, bond rating goes down, there were many things that went into that and, and a lot of it was the discipline of this Board of Education when it came to making the cuts last year and maintaining our fund balance, which ended up at about 17 and a half percent. And that was, that's excellent. And that's, for those of you, the fund balance is also known for, for me as my rainy day fund, when I run out of money fund. And it's really important that we maintain that in case there is a rainy day. So, last year, we had a lot of rainy days, we had some storms, and we're very proud of the fact that that, and the Board of Education is to be commended for making some very difficult and disciplined decisions around fiscal policy to maintain that. In addition to some of the fiscal challenges that are going on, the organizational culture is very important. Our people being responded to, we exist in terms of central office to support schools and if they are not feeling supported, then we had, there's a huge disconnect. And how do we think about doing that better? And how, how are the people who work here at this building connected to the, connected to schools, children, and our overall mission? And so, we've been working on that. In terms of school safety and the things that we've been focusing on, I'm very proud to report that we did have a very detailed meeting with our senior team in reference to our safety planning and in anticipation of our safety director coming onboard, there were things that we learned that we could do right away. And those three things that are non-negotiables are in our schools. The first one is making sure that everyone is, who is supposed to be in the building is wearing a badge. And I've asked for, we need everybody to do that. And some people are, I've heard a couple of people already say, well, you know, we know everybody in the building. Well, if you have a, you have a crisis and someone has to respond, the police don't know you, the fire don't know you, and so it's very important that you're wearing your badge. I'm, thank you, I'm sorry for the demonstration, it didn't go so well. The second thing is to make sure that all of our schools have up-to-date building plans in their schools and have those available should there be a critical incident. That has been achieved by November 1st. And the third was to make sure that all schools know if they have any radio areas in the building that don't have coverage. And that also was very important. So, we're very proud and we, I need to recognize our school leaders, because that happened because of our school principals who made sure that that happened in each of their Moving forward, based on what we learned so far, there are four areas that will need considerable attention from the superintendent. And the first one is working to create financial stability. The second is equity of opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Gotti, for highlighting, that's one of the areas of opportunity. And so, thank you for highlighting that. There are many others, but that one is a, is a really very good example. Guaranteed access to high-quality educators. How are we building our pipeline for our teachers, our administrators, and our central office personnel moving forward? And where can we learn this the best? We have a lot of great things going on, but we have work to do. And then lastly, beginning the process and collaboration with our board on strategic planning. And this concludes my report for this evening on my first 90 days. For those of you who are really bored and you want to read all 26 pages, it actually is not as bad as it seems, but there are lots of, there's a lot of information in there. And again, thank you to all of the people who helped me learn about Omaha. I would not have been able to learn it without you. Every comment that you gave me helped me move forward.
Mr. Scanlon.
As far as the goal for reviewing and studying the district-wide fiscal health and the create financial stability, can you kind of give estimated timeframes for, I guess, first, how long do you think it'll take to review the current fiscal health of the district and then timeline to create some financial stability within the district?
I have, I have committed to 180 days for that to happen. Obviously, there are some things that we'll be doing throughout the budget process that will help us to get there. We have with our unfunded liability for, for OSER's, there is likely some work that we will need to do during the legislative session. And so, that's one of the, one of the reasons that I said 180 days, that gets us close. It's, I probably needed to maybe even say 210 days, thinking that the legis, when the, when the session ends. Those are, that's, but that's what I project in terms of the amount of time that it will take. There are certain things that have been, are currently in the works, especially in terms of making sure we maintain our fund balance, some things like that, that, and some recommendations I may have for policy implications. Currently, our recommendation is to maintain a 10 to 20 percent. And I may make a recommendation for that lower number to, to, to be higher, because if it, if you maintain a 10 percent, anything that happens, you would drop below that. But that's what I see, about 180 days.
And is that, just for clarification, that's for, to determine the financial stability or is it for the review?
No, that, I think, no, I think that the review will, the completion of the review would have, will happen probably by the end of February. Would have a very, a much, because it's not just me, it's my entire team and then what input we need for that. But the goal is to get us to, by the end of the year, which is June, to really have a better plan around that and more, a better long-term plan, looking at, we know what our Looking at, we know what our five-year projection was. We have to make quite a few adjustments to our five-year projection because it was, we're a little bit positioned, I hate to say this out loud, we're positioned a little bit better than that last five-year projection that you, the board received. But we need to think about how we're going to do that. We have, and consider how potential legislation could help us get to stability.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Any other comments or questions about the 90 days?
Well, again, thank you, Dr. Logan, for this very detailed plan, your entry plan. I know you're a perfectionist, so we're willing to give you as much time as possible to give us as much detail. And I figure if there are no questions or comments, that means it must be a well-detailed plan. So again, thank you for all your hard work and looking forward to your next report in the spring. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is J2B, our policy updates. Mr. Ray.
Thank you very much. Six policies came out of the last policy committee meeting that met on October 1st, 2018. They were supplied to you as hard copies on October 15. This is the first time that they will be as information. And then November 19th, they'll be first reading. The six policies are existing policies that just require some edits. 504 on your sheet gives you an update on what page and the updates to it. 5403, Pregnant and Parenting Students is actually a new policy. For the most part, we did have a policy, but it was revised based on statute, provides a little bit more detail. 6214 is a new policy, outlines the new statutory requirements for reading instruction improvement. Policy 7000 is a lengthy policy, but it updated some terms with the purchasing of food and food products and updated the title of chief operating officer rather than executive director. 8231 matches state statute change that allowable expense of $25 to $50 for dinners. That was updated to match the state, the statute. 8274 is an existing policy which adds a line at the bottom requiring notification from board officers if they communicate out when speaking on the board's behalf. So that's also outlined in the red on policy 8274. So if you have any input between now and the 19th, please don't hesitate or any questions too that I can help answer as we look at these policies one more time and then eventually having approval December 3rd as second reading.
Any other comments or questions? These policies did go through the policy committee.
That's correct.
Well, again, tomorrow is election day. It is predicted to be the highest midterm turnout in all this nation's history, so good luck to everybody in the races. And also for the entire board, we have received reports. It's the fourth quarter board travel expenses. And Vice President America.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Dr. Tony Turnquist and Mark Warnicki, real estate pending and potential litigation, legal advice and personnel.
There's a motion on the floor to go on the closed session. By Vice President America, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
America.
Aye.
Proman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Let me, let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board and legal counsel. Dr. Turnquist and Mark Warnicki, real estate pending and potential litigation, legal advice and personnel. Let me remind, excuse me, let the record reflect that the board will run the closed session at 7:44.